Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, December 18th. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're starting things off with a proclamation for Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And I believe we have some guests here that we would invite to the microphone. If you've got some information you'd like to share with us.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm the CEO of LTHC Homeless Services, and we are commemorating the National Homeless Persons Memorial event this Thursday at 4:00. We will be in between the LTHC and the Salvation Army building on 12th Street. It's unfortunate that we even have people that are unhoused in our community. It's even more unfortunate when people are dying at much faster rates when they are unhoused due to not having appropriate housing solutions. So this is every year, this day on December 21st, which is the longest day of the year, we commemorate those who have passed. So I thank you very much for doing this proclamation. We really appreciate the support from everyone in our community because it really does take a village to help people that have no housing opportunities. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Whereas December 20--
Hang on just a second, Dave. I'm sorry.
Very quickly, good morning. My name is Pablo, and I'm the Executive Program Director at Lafayette Urban Ministry. Thank you for doing this. And it's just to us, it's a reminder that we could all do better. There are people across the country dying by the river in tents, in cars, and this gives us one time of year to remember that they are full-fledged members of our society, our community, and they deserve to be treated like neighbors and remembered in this way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Pablo.
Whereas December 21st, 2023 marks the first day of winter and is the longest night of the year. Whereas the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council have designated December 21st, 2023 as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Whereas thousands die each year without stable housing. Whereas homelessness continues to be a serious challenge for many Tippecanoe County residents who have the right to adequate food, housing, clothing, safety, and healthcare. Whereas housing is a fundamental right and a basic human need.
Whereas homelessness raises one's risk of illness, injury, and death. Whereas LTHC Homeless Services is a leader in ending homelessness by connecting individuals and families with resources and housing solutions. Whereas members of the Homeless Prevention and Intervention Network will honor our neighbors who have passed away in 2023 as a result of homelessness. Whereas by joining together and remembering our neighbors, we can honor their lives by working to provide solutions to end homelessness within this community.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Tippecanoe County Board of Commissioners that December 21st, 2023 is hereby named National Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Tippecanoe County to remember those who have died while experiencing homelessness and to encourage citizens to come together to celebrate their memory and address the factors that lead to homelessness.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda are the meeting minutes. It looks like we have--
Four sets.
Four sets, yes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the December 4 regular meeting, the December 4 special meeting, and the two executive sessions, one from December 4 and one from December 5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Paula, counts payable.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the claims dated December 6 through December 18, 2023 be approved without exception.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the claims. Any additional comment or discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and that motion passes. Paula, payroll?
Mr. President, I would also like to recommend the payroll dated December 8, 2023 be approved without exception.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Morning.
Good morning. A few items today. The first is an amendment to outstanding pre-existing American Structure Point agreement. This extends design to Phase 2. This is for County Road 500 East between US 52 and County Road 350.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the amendment number one for American Structure Point for the County Road 500 East Phase 2 project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
So just to read into the record, that amendment was an amount of $546,615. We have three on-call agreements for 2024. The first from Butler, Fairman, and Seifert. The second from CivilCon, and the third from VS Engineering.
Mr. President, I move that we approve these three agreements for on-call with BFS, CivilCon, and VS Engineering.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the three agreements, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes.
And my last item is actually the last parcel for the Bridge 527 project. That's the bridge on Old 231. This is parcel number two. Donald and Pamela Whitehead has a warranty deed in the amount of $6,900, and temporary easement grants to A and B in the amount of $6,141.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the warranty deed and temporary easement for parcel two, Donald and Pamela Whitehead, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Good morning, Sadie.
Good morning. I am requesting approval of three separate policies to update our current handbook. First policy is 6.11.1 Progressive Discipline. This updates C to stay up to a three-day suspension without pay documented for employee's file, and adds E, employees of the jail may be placed on administrative leave at the discretion of the sheriff due to necessary investigative procedures.
Do you recommend we hear these separately, or?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to you, but it's probably best if you do them separately.
Okay. All right. Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the change for progressive discipline within the handbook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to update the progressive discipline policy in the handbook, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes.
The next policy would be 4.1 Vacation Benefits. There's just some updates to this benefit. The longevity accrual in carryover and max bank allowance stays the same. So the updates are if your length of employment is less than 10 years and you resign, you'll be paid for accrued unused vacation leave up to a maximum of 10 days. If your length of employment is greater than 10 years and you resign, you will be paid for accrued unused vacation leave up to a maximum of 20 days. Another addition is a regular full-time employee or regular part-time employee that leaves the county within one year of their date of hire will not be compensated for accrued unused accrued vacation time. There's some transfer clauses. If you transfer between departments or positions within the county, you retain your balance of accrued vacation leave, your longevity follows you. Upon transfer to a differing shift length, unused accrued time will be recalculated in order to reflect the same number of days based on the new shift length. Upon transferring to a differing department, comp time and holiday deferred time will be paid out by the department in which it was earned. Part-time, temporary, or seasonal employees who transfer into a full-time or regular part-time position are treated as new employees for purposes of vacation leave.
Was that last part that wasn't in the previous?
The last bullet point was every other part of the transfer was new.
Okay, okay. And then again, the actual accruals remain exactly the same.
Correct.
The rate of accruals.
Yep. Rate of accrual remains the same. The annual accrual rate remains the same, and the 150% max bank remains the same.
Okay. There, I know you've worked very hard on this. Thank you very much, and appreciate, actually, a lot of department heads have weighed in on this, so appreciate the input. Okay, I'll make the motion. We approve the change in the handbook in regard to vacation benefits as outlined.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes.
The final is an addition. There's a typo. It should be section 4.7, not 5.7. It's parental leave. This whole policy is new. I'll summarize it. Essentially, paid parental leave will be provided to eligible employees who are a birth mother, biological father, adopted mother, or adopted father. Eligible employees will be provided up to 15 days of their regularly scheduled workdays of paid parental leave to be utilized within six months of birth or adoption placement. This coincides with FMLA.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the addition of parental leave to the handbook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie. Good morning.
Based upon Project Safe Neighborhood, we still have the grant, so.
And we do this annually, but I'm curious, this one expires in July?
Don't have any word yet on whether the grant will be--
I see, so that's the date that grant expires?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then the bizarre payout dates, is that what we have always done?
We did that based upon the six-month window we have left with the grant with the feds.
Okay.
So if we can receive more money, I'll be here in June. If not, we're covered with this on the term, the end of the contract.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the professional services agreement with Catherine Redd for Project Safe Neighborhood.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
We have Kelly, is Kelly here? There's Kelly. Sure. Morning.
Good morning. We are, we have a MOU agreement in front of you for our pharmacy contract. We are currently in the transition of moving from Quality Correctional to the Health Department to take over our nursing. In that process, Dr. Loomis and I are working on a seamless transition for our participants to receive their medications, and this contract allows for Genoa Pharmacy to deliver those on a daily basis.
I'd just add that under this agreement, they'll sort of be the default pharmacy. The participants there can use whatever pharmacy they want, but they'll have the infrastructure in place. Most people won't have any real preference, and they can, Genoa can take care of things. And then they'll bill Medicaid and insurers, and if need be, the participant. And it has language in there that both are going to comply with HIPAA and other regulations about medical information.
Okay.
Any questions for Kelly or Doug?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the pharmacy agreement with Genoa Healthcare LLC for community corrections.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract as submitted, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And motion passes.
Thank you.
And I believe we have a presentation on FEMA.
Good morning.
Good morning, Aubrey. That's a pass phrase.
New system.
Clearly, the password is not password.
See, this is exciting. I get to be the guinea pig. You get to use our new stuff, right?
Exactly. Lucky you.
Woo-hoo. Okay. Perfect. Sure. I don't know if it'll go that far, will it? Okay, so I should be able to just click, and it'll go forward?
Hopefully. Unless it's too far away.
If it is, I can just ask someone to advance the slide, that's fine.
I was going to say it's probably too far away.
Okay, so my name's Aubrey. I'm the West Central Indiana Fetal and Infant Mortality Review Coordinator here in Tippecanoe County. I'm here just to talk to you guys a little bit about our annual report this year. If you want to advance to the next slide. For those of you who aren't familiar with what FEMA is, I am going to touch on just an overview of what we are, then we'll focus on those highlights from our annual report, look at our future plans, and our funding sources. So at a high-level overview, FEMA is a two-tiered multidisciplinary team process for reviewing stillbirth and infant deaths. We do this in order to identify gaps in service, opportunities for prevention, and to better the overall health of women, infants, and families here in our community. Our case criteria is broken down where we look at stillbirths, so 20 weeks gestation up to one year of life. Anything prior to 20 weeks gestation is considered a miscarriage, and we don't have review teams in place for that at this time. Fetal and infant mortality data is focused on the decedent's county of residence, so just because we have several different counties coming to deliver here, we only focus on our Tippecanoe County residents for the purpose of review, and we look at cases from the year prior. So what we reviewed this year were cases from 2022. Our case review team-- Sorry, can we go back? Our case review team looks at de-identified case summaries. That includes any touchpoints with the families, so medical, social documents that we have state statutes to be able to obtain, and I also reach out to families to get a maternal interview so we understand from their perspective how they perceive their care and if anything could have been done differently. We look at that, again, to identify gaps in service and make recommendations, and then we bring that to our community action team who takes those recommendations and really implements change in our community. So that's FEMA in a nutshell. Now that we have been in place for three full years, we have a very solid dataset to be looking at. We've done 65 cases specifically here in Tippecanoe County, and that really helps us start to better understand trends, not just in one particular year, but across several years, so we know where to focus our efforts. Again, you guys have seen the report, but these are some of the biggest things that I wanted to point out. Our leading causes of death have been from prematurity complications and perinatal risks, so those babies who pass away from infections or respiratory distress, but also babies that are born at a completely pre-viable age because of conditions with the mom, like severe preeclampsia or placental abruptions are in that category. We've seen the second leading cause is fetal deaths from unknown causes, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, and then sudden unexpected infant deaths, which are almost always related to unsafe sleep situations. So those were our three leading causes of death. But specifically with the unknown causes, we found that in 55% of cases, there was additional information either about that cause of death or potential contributing factors that were not on the death certificate at all. So that really emphasizes the value of our review process, especially with unknown causes being our second leading cause of death. This helps us understand where we need to put our action in place. Another big trend was racial disparities. We saw that Black, Hispanic, or biracial individuals accounted for over 50% of the deaths that we have seen from 2020 to 2022, even though they only make up about 20% of our population. And I will talk a little bit more about specifically what we want to do in regards to those racial disparities in a moment, but first, we can advance to the next slide, and I want to highlight some of our successes. So this year, I received national recognition from Healthy Birthday, Inc., and I was also featured in the National Center for Fatality Review and Prevention's annual, or monthly newsletter back in March for our collaboration with Purdue, St. Elizabeth, and Ivy Tech School of Nursing. We get nursing students trained in safe sleep and also fetal movement monitoring and racial equity before they even hit the hospital setting or the outpatient office setting, they're getting that information. We also invite students to come to our case reviews so they can see firsthand how not only medical but social aspects can really impact those health outcomes. We received recognition from the Indiana Department of Health and the Indiana Hospital Association for a FEMA death notification process that I put in place a little while ago. I work with our vital records and local hospitals to get a regular system in place where they notify us when there's a fetal death or infant death that we need to review, but this really has helped bridge the gap for the Indiana Department of Health's Epidemiology Department. They were missing a lot of fetal death data that wasn't getting to them from a local level, and so they really liked how this form worked, and now IHA requires hospitals to utilize that form if they want to receive the Inspire hospital level of distinction. Here locally, we had our community baby shower where over 115 families were served. Specifically, 45% of those were minority populations, and 81% were lower-income families, and this gave them the opportunity to connect not only with maternal and child health services, but other organizations that help address social needs as well. We've done so many other big things in this community with safe sleep, bereavement support. We have a new website now, so it's easier for individuals to access all of our resources in one place, but for the sake of time, I'll just encourage you to read about that in our report. We can advance to the next slide, please. In 2023 specifically, we felt that 32% of our cases were preventable, and 32% we were kind of on the fence if it could have been prevented or not. We thought that medical intervention could have changed the outcome in 68% of the cases, and 53% of outcomes could have been changed with improved screenings, follow-up resource connection, et cetera. Our main contributing factors that we've seen was obesity in overweight mothers in 84% of cases, 53% had infections, previous miscarriage, 53% also noted financial concerns, and 47% lived in a food desert. We make two types of recommendations, those for prevention, and then those just for overall health promotion. So when we're talking about preventing deaths from specific causes, this is a breakdown there. It essentially reads it's faceted by the subject, so if it was in the community, the healthcare setting, or the system where we thought this recommendation needed to take place. Each bar represents a different theme of that recommendation, so advocacy, education, healthcare improvement, and then each color represents a different specific topic. So this would read that in the community setting, for example, our leading recommendations were in regards to education, specifically safe sleep and smoking cessation. So that helps us narrow down what our focus should be in the upcoming year, and a lot of our recommendations of majority were in the healthcare setting. In 2023, our health promotion recommendations, there was way more of those, and it didn't make a pretty graph, so I couldn't include that on here, it just was way too big, but our leading subject, again, was in the healthcare setting. The leading theme was education, and specifically in education, we wanted to focus on COVID vaccination, preconception health, pregnancy planning, and smoking cessation. In the future, we would like to maintain this current FEMA process, our reviews, maintaining successful actions that we already have in place, like those trainings, the education on safe sleep, our community baby shower, but we also want to implement new action plans based on our findings from 2023, and if I had to guess, it's going to be really focused on preconception health and addressing those racial disparities. One of the biggest initiatives is going to be our new community pregnancy support program. This has kind of been in discussion for the last couple of months, but it's really going to take hold in 2024. This is not prenatal care, but it's going to be a supplement where moms can come and get additional support, education, screenings, and then we are adding the addition of free doula services through Transformed Birth Services where we would reimburse those doulas, which is actually a policy recommendation from the March of Dimes to help reduce racial disparities in maternal and infant health. Transformed Birth Services is this incredible team of diverse birth workers and doulas that we have partnered with, and they will be present at each one of those monthly meetings. Monica Keys, who's a nurse practitioner on our Board of Health, she's African-American and can help, you know, race match and represent our community when she's working with these populations, and she has a background specifically in maternal and child health. So she will be a huge asset to have at those monthly meetings as well. And lastly, we're focusing on regional expansion. This year, I was able to implement a successful Clinton County FEMA process. We've started to getting the ball rolling in White County, and as soon as we get that up and running, we'll expand further into Carroll and Boone, and then who knows what else. And none of that's possible, obviously, without funding. So in the past, we've relied on a small safety PIN grant and have had to ask the county for supplementation, but with the way that we are restructuring the Health Department, the FEMA program will now be completely free from county funds and will strictly rely on different grant funding and the Health First Indiana funds in the upcoming year. So this year, I was able to secure a $406,000 safety PIN grant. That is going to really be huge for maintaining our staff. We realized this year with Jolene, our lead case manager, she was able to step up and start doing some of the case abstractions for me, and having that extra time freed up to not just read about the cases, but to really focus on the action piece, we realized how valuable that is for our community and benefiting these moms and babies. So we're going to maintain that process and then focus on expansion. We'll also have the Health First Indiana funding. That will allow for that doula reimbursement that I was talking about before, any additional staff, and outreach supplies and advertising. And then Dr. Loomis has been working adamantly to get the Health Department established as a 501(c)(3). This will not only benefit every department in the Health Department, but specifically with FEMA, it will allow me to obtain more donations, especially when it's time for our community baby shower. I got turned down by a lot of large corporations who could only donate to 501(c)(3), but they were, you know, more than willing to give us car seats and cribs, they were just restricted by their policies. So that's all I have for you this morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to let you know about all of our findings. You can, anyone here can scan that QR code to read more, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So you had mentioned your case reviews.
Mm-hmm.
Are those, and you also said that you were studying, in 2023, you studied 2022 cases.
Yes.
Are the case reviews done at the time of that death, or is it done the following year?
It's done the following year, and that's only in Tippecanoe County. Like in our other counties where they have a smaller caseload, we're able to keep up with those, but a lot of times, by the time a case occurs and we're able to get all of the records-- the records, it typically takes more time. So any cases that occurred from January to December of '22 is what we reviewed in '23.
I see.
Any other questions for Aubrey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
This morning, I have the contractual services agreement between Purdue and Tippecanoe County for your signature.
Refresh our memory, Dee. We know this, we negotiated, bring this back down. We eliminated the community development director?
We did. We eliminated, last December, we worked to, we changed the community development educator position to a program assistant, and that program assistant position primarily focuses on virtual programming and marketing. And at that time, Dr. Henderson had also offered to reduce your part of that. Purdue picked up a little bit more. And so it went from 232,000 was the original contract last year, and then in December, when we met, it went to 196,000. And then this year, with a 4% increase for Purdue employees, it's 204.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this contractual service agreement between Purdue University and Tippecanoe County for the extension service in the amount of $204,615.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like we have an interlocal agreement. Doug, you want to take a shot at that?
Yeah. This is relative to the animal control facility, animal shelter, and it's between the cities of Lafayette, West Lafayette, and the county. The cities are contributing to the construction costs of the shelter because they're going to be using it. This secures their investment, in a sense, well, I mean, that's what it does, for a period of 15 years, so that, you know, if they're contributing money, they ought to get some use out of it. You're going to continue to own the facility, so if the future Board of Commissioners was to take a different direction in the next 15 minutes, there'd be some financial obligations to the cities if they were, you know, deprived of its use. It also creates a joint board, which sort of formalizes what's been informal, to have a representative of the county and of the two cities, probably the mayor's and a commissioner, but it does say you could appoint a representative if you wanted. And the purpose of that board is to administer the facility and make recommendations with respect to animal control operations in the county, particularly as they relate to the facility.
And?
And I should add, there's some numbers in there about how much, the contributions of the cities are still in flux, I think. And then, so there's a provision in there that, once you have the final costs in, everybody will agree as to what's actually been contributed, and we'll update this.
And then, West Lafayette has already heard this. Is that what you stated?
That's right. They approved this at their, at their December meeting.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Lafayette, West Lafayette, and Tippecanoe County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have a resolution concerning appointment of certain county highway department employees.
Yeah, so this resolution, just traditionally, you guys have done appointments every January for the Highway Assistant Executive Director and the Highway Maintenance Supervisor. As near as I can tell, there's no statutory obligation to do that. That's just been tradition. And so this streamlines your appointment process. You know, you continue to appoint the executive director of the Highway Department, and then that person's charged with appointing the Assistant Executive Director and the Highway Maintenance Supervisor.
Makes a lot of sense. I've always wondered why we were, we're doing it the other way. Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2023-18-CM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Stu, you still have to be appointed, though. Just so you know, you still have to be appointed.
And boy, do we struggle.
Okay, it looks like we have some public official bonds for Julie Roush, our clerk, our recorder, Kristy Martin, our sheriff, Robert Goldsmith, and our treasurer, Yadira Salazar.
Mr. President, I move that we accept these four bonds as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bonds as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes. Paula, do we have grant activity?
Yes, Mr. President. We'd like to request permission to accept the grant from the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis for the continuation of the Gateway of Hope program in the amount of $15,000 for use in maintaining this service to the Tippecanoe County citizens.
Mr. President, I move that we grant permission to accept as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Do we have any new or unfinished business? Hearing none. Reports on file from?
Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
Good morning. Two things I want to announce. First one is that we did receive a grant for nearly $30,000, that we can get some software that will help us run the elections better. But the most exciting thing that I want to share with you is that we attended the 2024 Administrator, the Election Administrative Conference last week, and Mike Smith was awarded the most prestigious award of the lifetime achievement award there from the state. And I'm really proud of Mike, because Mike has worked over 40 years. You may not know this, but he started when he was 16 years old. Do the math, it kind of tells you how old he is. And I'm even more proud that Tippecanoe, in the last two years, this is the second time, Joe Bumbleburg got this two years ago, the same award. But Mike, Mike is, he has an exceptional dedication in service. Even when he was ill, he came in when he was able to, and it just blew all of us away because he is just dedicated to make sure that our election, that we uphold integrity and that the democratic process is good. So, thank you. Just wanted to share those.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Congratulations to Mike. Okay, any additional unfinished business? We have reports on file from mail and duplicating. Those will be in our office immediately following the meeting, and from the clerk of the court, and the Rural Transportation Quarterly Report, the third quarter, that is, the County Public Library, the treasurer's report. Again, all of those will be available after the meeting. Any public comment?
Happy holidays, everyone. Move adjourned.
We're adjourned.